...forum featuring candidates for the Los Altos City Council. I'm Nancy Brewer-Cavanaro. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Los Altos Mountain View and the moderator for today's forum. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Los Altos Mountain View and the Los Altos Mountain View AAUW. The League of Women Voters of the Los Altos Mountain View area delivers unbiased public policy information and encourages citizens to shape better communities through active participation. The League is a nonprofit organization of women and men, established to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. The League does not support, oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties. The League does not endorse candidates, but we do, after careful study, take positions on political issues. The League invites anyone who's interested in government, politics, and serving the community to join us. We encourage you to visit votersedge.org for more voter information. It's not just statewide information, but it also has more local information there, too. The format for today's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will make a two-minute opening statement. Next, the candidates will respond to questions from the audience. Submitted questions should be of general interest, as each candidate will respond. Question sorters, who are sitting here in front of me, are League members, will review and select the questions that have been submitted. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Finally, the candidates will have two minutes to make a closing statement. To help keep us on time, we have a timekeeper in the front row who will signal each candidate when their time is up. Our timekeeper has his happy signs with him, so he'll keep us down. In the interest of time and decorum, the League asks our audience and candidates to abide by the following rules. Number one, the questions to candidates must be written on the cards provided by the League. League volunteers will be circulating throughout the forum to hand out cards and collect audience questions. Volunteers want to raise your hands, so people know who you are, see them there in the back of the room. If you need a card, a pen, or have a question to hand in, hold your card up and they'll get it from you. Please, no audience demonstrations, clapping, cheering, booing during the forum. Oh, please turn off all electronic devices that beep. I'll go ahead and start that off for you. Turn mine off. And if any devices are being used to record, we ask that the content be shared in its entirety to ensure that any remarks made are not distorted. Candidates. There's no substitutes or stand-ins allowed for the candidates, but you're all really you, I can see that. I will enforce the time limits. Actually, I will enforce firm time limits. After I say "thank you," your time is up, please end your comments. Please don't interrupt each other. Campaign materials are not to be displayed within the forum room. The League has provided space outside the forum room for candidates' materials. Okay, now I'm done with all the boring stuff. Now I'd like to introduce the candidates who are running for Los Altos City Council. The candidates are seated in the order they selected prior to the forum. Number one, on the far left, is Nisa Flagger. Number two, Jean Mordaud. Number three, Nancy Brumot. Number four, Anita Enander. And number five, Teresa Morris. Welcome and thank you for agreeing to participate in today's forum. We're now ready to begin, and we're going to start with opening statements, and we're going in the order in which you're seated. So, Nisa, you're first.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nisa Flagger, and I'm running for Los Altos City Council. First, of course, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate forum this evening. I do need to renew my membership, but I have been a member of the League for a few years, served on the Juvenile Justice Committee, so very happy to be participating in your forum. Over the next several years, City Council will be faced with many decisions on issues that will shape the future of Los Altos. To make those decisions, Los Altos deserves leaders with the right experience and demonstrated leadership style to move those issues forward. Based on my experience and my demonstrated leadership style, and the fact that I'm raising my family here and very passionate about the future of Los Altos, I believe I am the right choice for City Council. My experience includes serving on the El Camino Healthcare District Board, which includes Los Altos, the El Camino Hospital Board, Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Vice Chair of the Los Altos Grant Writing Committee, an attorney for Santa Clara County for over nine years, now I'm with HP, and mom of a young family. Those experiences will prove valuable on council, understanding, analyzing, and moving decisions forward. My demonstrated leadership style, it's been collaborative, reasoned, and thoughtful. And I always chuckle when I describe myself in that way, because in fact, it's people on my endorsement list who I've worked with over the years who have said this. And we always throw these buzzwords around collaborative, but I've already demonstrated that when I've served in leadership roles. So based on my experienced leadership style and my three goals of preserving what we love about Los Altos, moving the big issues forward, and being a champion for all neighborhoods and business districts, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Sean?
Good evening, and thank you to the League for hosting this forum. I'm also a member of the League, although I just joined, because for all those years I thought it was reserved for women. And then I found out that you don't discriminate against men, and so I gladly join you. So after training as an engineer in France, I earned an MBA from Stanford in 1972, and I started my career with the international management consulting firm of McKinsey &amp; Company, first in Paris and then in New York. And then I followed with corporate jobs in finance and general management. And I retired in Los Altos Hills with my school teacher-wife Barbara, who's in the backseat there knitting, as she is at every council meeting. She sits in the back, and then she gives me a debrief after, what I did wrong, what I was right on, what I was wrong on. So it's great, a great advisor. So in Los Altos Hills, I ended up, you know, after I retired, joining the Planning Commission. Then I served on council for two consecutive terms. And then I moved, we downsized in 2013, moved to Los Altos in a smaller place, and I was recruited by some friends here to run for council again, so I did. And I was elected in 2014, and now I'm running for a second term. I very much enjoy public service and the challenges of getting things done on council. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Hi, I'm Nancy Brumot, and many of you know me personally or know one or more of the many projects I've worked on for our community. I'm a parent, a 10-year resident, and an active participant in Los Altos. I have a master's degree from Northwestern University and over 20 years of corporate experience. I'm also the mother of a freshman at Los Altos High School. Over the last several months and years, I have met with thousands of residents and have been endorsed by over 150 elected officials, commissioners, and community leaders, including the Silicon Valley Association of Realtors and Evolve. The most rewarding part of that process has been engaging with each and every one of you. My decision to run for council has come directly out of the extensive work that I've done. My efforts have focused on our neighborhoods, our parks, our quality of life, providing an engaging environment for our youth, supporting our downtown vision by creating a vibrant gathering place for residents, and an economically sustainable environment for our businesses. I've also advocated and worked on a new performing arts theater and proposed a nature center for the benefit of our entire community. This election is extremely important. Careful decisions must be made in the coming months and years, and will have a huge impact on the future of Los Altos. Our city's 20-year general plan will be updated over the next four years, and a careful and thoughtful approach must be taken. I believe we can preserve our heritage and charm while also making positive improvements for our community. Being on council means being collaborative and bringing a fair and balanced approach to all residents and all voices. Being on council requires the ability to analyze details and know how a policy on paper will translate to real life. I have those skills and more, and I look forward to serving on council with your support. Thank you.
Anita?
Good evening, and thank you to the League. My name is Anita Enander. I love Los Altos. I've lived here for 40 years with my husband, Mike, and I have a 29-year-old daughter who grew up here. Whether you've lived here four years or 40, it's a special place with great neighborhoods and wonderful community businesses. All the candidates here say we want to keep that. But the people who you elect in November and the actions that the next council takes will determine what happens to our town in the next 20 years. That's because we will make the decisions, not just on downtown, but on the general plan, which will be up for revision. It determines the density of housing, the height of buildings, the policies that nurture or harm our businesses, such as reducing parking, how we repair our infrastructure and care for our open space, how we manage traffic and provide for safe streets. My education with a master's degree in public service gave me a great foundation. I held several management positions in the federal service, then spent 20 years as the owner of a management consulting business where I worked fixing broken companies and organizations and helping teams of people work better together. Then I owned and managed international corporation with clients in more than 20, excuse me, 32 countries. Along the way, I've had to be very careful with my money, because it was mine. And I've been immersed in land use issues for four years, first as a member of the Downtown Buildings Committee and then serving on the Planning Commission. I have no special interests, no pet causes except one, and that's to put our city on a sound policy and financial footing for the future for the benefits of you, our residents. I will listen to you first. I will make decisions based on facts, not fantasies. I will apply everything I've learned in over 40 years on your behalf if you will do me the honor of endorsing my candidacy and voting for me on November 6th. Thank you.
Teresa?
Good evening. Thank you to the League for having us here, and I appreciate everybody in the audience in the chambers being here as well. It's nice to see new faces.
I can hear you.
You can't hear me?
No.
Okay. So, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Try not to be too soft-spoken. I'm running for council, I guess that's obvious, I'm up here. One of the reasons I'm running, one of the main reasons, is to bring the residents' voice back into the conversation about what happens in our town. In addition to that, I think we need to include our merchants. There are some large changes underfoot in town, and I want to make sure that all of the stakeholders have the opportunity to have input in what happens as we go forward. As Anita mentioned, we do have a general plan change coming up, that we need to update our general plan, and I would really like to be part of that to ensure that we can maintain the character of our town. My history in Los Altos is shorter than some that are up here. I've been here since 2002. My husband and I moved here. He was born and raised in Los Altos, but had left for a while for school and work, and we came back. We chose this town because it is a small town, has a nice feel to it. It has a lot of greenery, nice neighbors, good schools, and it has that character that we like. My work background is, I'm currently working with families as a sleep and behavior consultant. I've worked with families for many, many years. I have an understanding of what they're looking for and what drives them to move to a community, but also to move from the community. I have a background before that in retail, 18 years of retail. I have a distinct difference of, different way of looking at things than many of the other people on the dais may have this evening, because I have that background and I understand what it takes to make a good downtown and keep it active. Thank you, and I hope you'll vote for me, and remember, it's Morris's Forest. Thank you.
Thank you. So we don't want to have the same person answer all the questions first, so this next question, we're going to start with you, Jean. And apparently, I'm going to pick a really hard question, because that's the one that's on top. What steps, if any, do you think the City Council should pursue to increase the activity and vitality in downtown Los Altos? Doesn't really seem like a one-minute question, but...
No, it's a very easy question, because we spent two years studying it, with 40 public meetings, gathering input from the residents, and we, as a result, we've developed the vision for downtown, which was unanimously adopted by this council, which does exactly that. So what I'm telling you, it's very simple, just implement the vision. That's what we need to do.
Thank you. Nancy?
So I've followed every nuance of our downtown visioning process as well over the last two years, and I think what's come out of it, what the consultants came up with in the end, were four different possible versions. Everything from the most vibrant down to doing almost nothing. And I think there's some great ideas in there and some not-so-great ideas, and I think we need to pick out what those best ideas are, and for me, those are the ones that make our downtown a community gathering place. Those are the ones that create outdoor dining spaces and what they call outdoor activity nodes, which are fire pits scattered around the town, or interactive public art, or stages where our kids can perform with their bands. So making it even more of a draw for our residents to come downtown, which will, in effect, support our residents and businesses. So yes, I am in support of taking those steps necessary. Thank you.
Anita?
The most important thing is that we do the right thing and that we don't mess up the great things that we have. One of the great concerns I have is parking. The plan, the vision plan, would take about seven of our parking play-up plazas and turn them into commercial and other activities without a sound plan for how to replace that parking. I don't think that's good for business. I think we should do the things with zoning that we can do, encourage restaurants and other activities downtown. The other thing that concerns me is that the consultant says in the report on page 144 that there is not funds for the city to do what's called for in the vision plan, and so they advocate the intense redevelopment of this property in order to generate the funds to do that. I think we have not yet had a good community conversation about whether that is the right way to change downtown. So I love to support our businesses by encouraging the kinds of businesses and the kind of dynamism in retail and commercial that will bring our residents and others downtown.
Thank you. Teresa?
So again, I'm sort of uniquely qualified to discuss some of the aspects of the downtown. It's a big topic, in my opinion. I think that one of the things that we need to do first is discuss changes with our merchants. As I've walked around town and talked to different merchants, I've discovered that they don't know anything about the downtown visioning plan, they haven't been consulted about it. I have my concerns that if we move forward with this plan, we run the risk of closing down many of the stores that we have and we love. The other is, I think we have an image issue that needs to change for our downtown. You keep hearing, or people keep saying, that it isn't vibrant, that it isn't vital. And I'll tell you that when you talk to the merchants downtown, they'll say they're doing quite well, thank you, and many times, they aren't open in the evenings for different events, because they don't need to be open for them. I do believe we need to solve the number-one question, which is, how do we get people to come into our downtown and return to our downtown if that's the sort of vitality that we want to have in the vibrancy? Thank you.
Nisa?
Thank you. So I think to increase vibrancy in our downtown, we need to look at the downtown vision plan that a couple of the other candidates have already mentioned. This is a plan that spans over 25 years, and so we would not be implementing it as a council, all portions of it immediately. I also don't believe that all portions of this downtown vision plan align well with the charm and character of Los Altos. So the parts of the plan, I like to refer to them as the low-hanging fruits, that I think we need to focus on, that would immediately increase vitality and vibrancy, are the things that would increase feet on the street and attract members of our community, residents in Los Altos, to want to come downtown. And so I think of more restaurants, more shops that meet the needs of families, seniors, empty nesters, and all different residents here in Los Altos. I do think as a council member, as we move forward with the different portions and implementing those portions, we should engage, we should continue the engagement with the community to ensure that it reflects what we want, and address things like parking and other solutions.
Thank you. All right, this next question, we're going to start with Nancy. What are your thoughts about public-private partnerships in Los Altos?
I think public-private partnerships represent a great opportunity for us. We have to study each one carefully and make sure that it's a good fit for our community. But I will give as one example something I've worked on in the past, which is a new performing arts theater. And in that case, when you're working with a nonprofit theater group, it's very important, and in most cases with most cities, the city would provide the land and the theater group would raise the money to build the facility. That's a typical public-private partnership, and that is something that I do support. It would be very difficult for a theater group to raise enough money to buy its own land, so if it's something for the good of the community, then I support the possibilities of public-private partnerships. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
Public-private partnerships are great in theory. My experience is that few of them are truly successful, so we have to go into this with our eyes open and a good plan. I'll take the example that Nancy used of the theater, and one of the issues that arises with that, and it's in the visioning plan actually in discussing the theater, is that most such arrangements do not provide sufficient funds for the operation of the theater. And it indicates in the report that the community would need to plan, the city would need to plan, to provide a subsidy for maintenance and utilities. So we really need to think about any given plan and whether what we're giving up in our public land comes back in something that the community really wants to do, and that we carefully look at the facts and the economic impact of that before we go forward. I think it's very important that we make sure the community really wants it before we do it.
Thank you. Teresa?
My initial reaction to public-private partnerships is to say I'm opposed to them. And one of the reasons I'm opposed to them is, I think we give our, basically our souls away when we form a partnership with many of the public entities. However, I do think that it can be done at times in a good way, where it actually is benefiting the residents and the town. I think, as has been said previously, that we have to reflect very carefully on whether or not that would be the case on an individual basis. But an example that was given to me with this question previously was, what about if Google wanted to come in and pay for the kitchen at the senior center on Grant Road and have the opportunity to name the kitchen and the senior center after Google? And my response would be, I'm not a big fan of that sort of thing. I think that Los Altos should be able to afford to do what they want to do. Thank you.
Nisa?
I would support public-private partnerships if it's a good fit for Los Altos. We just finished talking about the downtown vision plan, and one of the issues raised has to do with our parking. And so that, to me, and parking structures, as many of you know, are very expensive. And so that's definitely an area, if I were on council, I would consider working with a private entity to fund having some kind of parking solution as we move forward with our downtown vision plan, and implementing some of the portions, as we said before, that align with our charm and character. You know, I agree with what has been said before, you know, not everything that we do here in Los Altos, we want to partner with a private entity, but it's not something we should rule out. I am, you know, very fiscally responsible, and when I think about our reserves and funding here in Los Altos, I want to make sure that to the extent we can save Los Altos or funds and work with a private entity to benefit the community, those are things we look for and consider. Thank you.
Sean?
Public-private partnerships are just a tool of urban planning and city financing city projects. So some projects are good, some projects are bad, but you don't attack the tool. The tool is a good tool, and in some situations, it makes sense. And in particular, for example, if we want to, you know, one of the candidates mentioned the issue of hesitant about the vision because the parking, well precisely, we and the vision, there are two parking structures, and to build those parking structures, which are necessary, we need to perhaps consider a public-private partnership, because they're very expensive. So, yeah, it's just a tool, it could be a good tool for the right project.
Thank you. This next question, we're going to start with you, Anita. What do you think are the two most pressing issues for the city today?
Making sure that we have safe streets and neighborhoods for our families and our residents, and that we're managing the growth pressures that get in the way of that. And the other is restoring some fiscal responsibility, so that we can meet our current and future obligations for pensions and for our infrastructure maintenance. I'm very concerned that we don't have fully funded mechanism to maintain things as simple as our sewers and some of our other infrastructure in town. And so I think we have to take care of those two things, managing growth and dealing with fiscal issues.
Thank you. Teresa?
Just two?
Just two.
Just two, all right.
I know, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So my first one is to make sure that we do incorporate the voice of the residents and the other stakeholders in town, and that, one of the reasons that I'm so adamant about that is because by doing that, what we will do is we will actually save a great deal of time and quite possibly money. It means that residents won't need to organize and show up at city council meetings en masse to state their positions on different things that are happening in their neighborhoods. Staff then won't have to go back to the drawing board and redo things based on that input. We need to get the input first, not after we start making decisions and plans about what happens in neighborhoods. So that's one of the main ones. The other is affordable housing. It is talked about, it is bantered about, and nothing is being done about it. We seem to be having a windfall for developers on El Camino, but we're not getting affordable housing out of it. That needs to be discussed, we need to have a plan, we need to figure out what we're doing.
Thank you. Nisa?
So there are many pressing issues facing Los Altos. The two I'll talk about, one, traffic safety and improvements, including safe routes to school throughout Los Altos. When I talk to friends, neighbors, and residents, regardless if they're young families or seniors, this is a big issue throughout Los Altos. And I think we need to prioritize and make this part of our budget for next year, where we say we're not going to just talk about improving the roads and having better safe routes for school, closed-door schools. We also need to invest the necessary funding and resources to see them through. The second pressing issue has to do with our infrastructure. Again, I think we need to invest in our resources to ensure that when we all think about Los Altos and we look at our roads, our public facilities here in our chambers, and also the rest of City Hall, we need to make sure we're investing in these public facilities and resources to adequately reflect Los Altos and the needs in our community.
Thank you. Sean?
We have some issues, but I can assure you that lack of money or imprudence, fiscal imprudence, is not one of them. In fact, it's exactly the opposite. The reason why we have severe problem in infrastructure, deficient streets, that we need to invest heavily on, a community center, which is not even a community center, which was built 50 years ago, or whatever, is because we haven't invested in our assets, in our streets, in our buildings. So the problem, I agree totally with what Nisa just said, we need to invest heavily, and we can't afford it. We don't have any, we are very lucky to be a city that is very solid financially, because we rely almost entirely on property tax, which does not go down, it just goes up or stays flat in a recession, but never goes down. Thank you.
Nancy?
So I'm going to mention traffic and safe routes to school as well. I think it's a top priority. We have a lot of hotspots around each one of our schools. I will say that I personally led the effort to get three crosswalks built, which lead to four different schools. It took me over two years to get that through the city and the city council. But I think through that, I've learned a lot about our traffic and our safe routes to school, and I will also say that this year, we had 10 safe routes to school projects, which we're currently working through, we're about 60% done with those right now. So we are making progress. The council does recognize the issue, and we need to continue putting the effort there. My second top priority would be improving city governance, improving the way the council works with residents, works with commissions, and works with staff. And we have a few easy things we can do to make that much more effective. So there's a lot of other things I'd put on my list, but for now, I'll leave it at those two items. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, question number four, we're going to start with you, Teresa. When developers provide affordable housing, who monitors the housing to make sure qualified people are the ones living there?
Nobody in our town does. We don't have that service in our city. Palo Alto has one. From my understanding, Palo Alto has a system in place to make sure that the people that buy those units and live in those units remain qualified for those units. We are lacking that, I do believe we need it.
Nisa?
I agree with Teresa. A matter of fact, I was attending a coffee recently, and someone mentioned two different BMR... mentioned two different BMR units that are vacant. And so, you know, it's a great first step to have designated BMR units because we need them in our community. But we need to follow up. We need a better management of the BMR units to ensure that the people in Los Altos who need the BMRs are assigned the BMRs and it remains a BMR unit. And so I definitely think for Los Altos, we can do a much better job. If I'm on council, that's one thing I would definitely push for because I believe that for our community, affordable housing should be a priority. Because when we think about affordable housing, I think of seniors, teachers, emergency responders, city workforce, so many people that helped to make Los Altos what it is. And so this should be a priority, not just in designating BMRs and other affordable-type units, but also having the right program to see it through.
Thank you. Sean?
Well, I'm glad to announce that our city manager signed last week a contract with Palo Alto to the same entity that's managing their affordable housing is now managing ours. The problem with BMRs, with condos that are affordable, is you can't kick people out. They, you know, they can, they have the right by lottery to buy one of those if they qualify. And 10 years later, they may not qualify anymore, but you cannot force them to sell them. So that's why I'm very much in favor of pushing for affordable housing that's rental as opposed to for sale. Unfortunately, a lot of developer prefer to build condos, and we can't force them to do rental. But we try to incentivate rentals as opposed to condos for sale.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yes, I would agree. I think that the emphasis should be on the rental market and not on the ownership market for BMRs. It's much easier to manage, and I'm very happy to know that the city is in the process of managing it more closely. I'm also a firm proponent of affordable housing in general, and in particular in Los Altos, where we're already very much of a built-out community. What we can do are the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. And our council has made a lot of progress recently, in the last couple of months, in approving some new regulations to make it easier for people to build those. They're great for the homeowner who can rent them out for revenue. They're great for people who need to have a caregiver on the property or want to have their family close by, or rent to a teacher. It's a much more affordable solution that I think our community can really get behind. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
I was thrilled to find that the city had finally signed that contract that the mayor just mentioned. When I was a management consultant, one of the things we worked a lot on was processes and procedures that weren't working in organizations, and that one was broken. It's nice to know it's fixed. Looking then at the bigger question of how do we get more below-market-rate housing in our community, I think this is a problem that has been developing for many, many years, and it's not going to be easy to fix. We're not going to fix it with a few condos here and there and fighting with developers over whether they're going to be for sale, for rental, and so on. We have to take a much broader look at the housing issue, not just in our community, but in the surrounding community, and decide how can we work together to increase housing stock at a level that workforce people can afford without wrecking our streets full of traffic and ruining our neighborhoods. And that's not an easy thing to do. It's a big problem, and we're going to have to all work together to make it happen.
Thank you. So I'm taking this next question out of the order in which it was handed to me, just because it seems so related to that one. And we're going to start with you, Nisa. Wait, I'm sorry. When you use acronyms, would you please define the acronyms that you use? And so we'll add that into your question about what's a BMR. How is Los Altos going to meet their requirements for new housing from the state?
So Los Altos currently is below the housing target. And we've already talked about different ways we can move closer to that housing target. This includes the below-market-rate housing units, BMRs, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, or as some people refer to them as granny units. And city council has, over the last year, made some good progress in that direction, making it much easier for residents to have ADUs on their property. In addition to ADUs and BMRs, we should also look at encouraging more high-density housing on El Camino. That's already happening, and I'm a big supporter of that because that's a place where we can have BMR units. We, you know, the developers, you know, come to the table, and that's an opportunity for council to really work with them to incorporate BMR units. I will quickly say with regards to the El Camino high-density housing, that we should always consider the impact, the noise impact and traffic impact on our neighbors, on Casito Way and the other neighborhoods, and ensure they're not negatively impacted as we move forward.
Thank you. Sean?
How do we do it? ADUs are a big component. Increasing, we just increased the percent of inclusion, what's called inclusionary zoning, which is from 10 to 15%. So now, for every 100 units you build, you need to have 15% affordable. We also introducing an in-loo fee for smaller development. So instead of building them, if you do four units, for example, or five units or eight units, it's not, it's not practical to do affordable. Then you pay. We pull all this money, and we work maybe with Mountain View or our neighbor and build something. And I think Supervisor Joe Semidian is working at helping us to resolve, as Anita said, resolve the issue on a more regional basis because, you know, the land in Los Altos is very expensive, and it could be just two or three miles away, much less expensive.
Nancy?
So, yes, I think we've touched on all of them, including ADUs, BMRs, in-loo fees, impact fees. There's a whole list of things we can be doing and we should be doing better. I've spoken to some of the council members in Mountain View, and they're not too crazy about the idea of Los Altos giving them money so that they can build it. And, you know, we need to take care of our own problem, too. So I've also followed Joe Semidian's project pretty closely, which he's working on building some teacher housing or trying to get that through in Palo Alto, where they'd use county land and work with all the school districts to provide the money to build the facility, I mean, the facility, the housing. And I think that's a great starting place. I think Mountain View could do something like that on the 10th school site that the school district is currently looking at, but that's another subject. We have to look at all creative possibilities. And I think ADUs for Los Altos is a big one. So, thank you.
Anita?
Our housing element basically says that half of the below-market-rate units we should be building, we would put on the properties that are around El Camino and the Sherwood Triangle. And as a member of the Planning Commission, I propose that we develop a new specific plan for that area specifically to deal with how are we going to get that kind of housing, especially rental housing. It's the sensible place to put rental housing to meet those needs. That was not supported by the other members of the Planning Commission or the council, but it's something that I would bring back immediately. The other thing I would say to Mountain View, and I understand they don't want to, quote, "build our low-market-rate units," is maybe we should do some horse trading with them about why we don't want their traffic from their huge developments going through our neighborhoods. Maybe we have something to talk about.
Teresa?
First and foremost, I'm happy to hear everybody discussing this topic because it is near and dear to my heart. We are built out in Los Altos. It is going to be difficult to fit very many more units into the area. I think, as I mentioned in my opening statement, we are sort of giving away a great deal when we're allowing developers to come in and put large buildings in, and they aren't meeting the needs that we need to be, or the state mandates that we need to be meeting. I would propose, if I were elected, when I am elected, that we commit, get a committee together of residents and perhaps some developers that will come up with creative ways that we can solve some of the housing problem. I think it's important to include the residents in this discussion and make sure that they have input in how it gets done and what happens in their neighborhoods. I was involved with a neighborhood group on El Camino. They brought in hundreds of signatures saying that they did not want to be severely impacted by the buildings that were being put up on El Camino. They were severely impacted by these buildings. 4,880 is huge. My time's up.
Thank you. All right. This question, we're going to start with Sean. Please share your views on whether any type of taller, and taller is defined as four-plus stories, should be part of Los Altos in the future, and if so, where should they go and why?
It's kind of a complicated question, so it's, I hope it works for a minute.
Let me dispose of downtown right away. No, okay. El Camino and, you know, some specific area, like Anita talked about, the Sherwood Triangle, which is intersection of San Antonio Road and El Camino. That area, we can do it right now. We can do four-stories commercial or five-story residential because of the state density bonus law. And so we can do four and five stories, and that's it. I don't, I don't think, I'm not in favor of doing any higher than this. And I don't, I'm not in favor of doing more than three stories in downtown.
Thank you.
I would say I would agree with that, specifically in terms of the locations along El Camino downtown. I think three stories would be the limit. But again, we need to come back to thoughtful, smart, and well-designed buildings. So I believe we need a design review commission established for commercial and larger residential buildings with architects on the commission and designers, so that we can really look at important issues like setbacks and the FAR, the floor-area ratio, and look at the daylight plane and other things to make sure that the buildings fit into our community, are attractive, and are not big boxes. So I think we can do it, if we do it smart and well-designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
A design review commission or group was recommended by the Downtown Buildings Committee that Teresa and I served on. It was adopted by the city council but has yet to be implemented, so I hope that it will happen soon. I agree with Jean. The only four-story buildings we should have would be down in the El Camino area. But one of the things that we should do is what Mountain View did, which was to look at all the adjoining parcels. And when you develop a specific plan, you look at whether or not a specific property behind or adjacent is a single-family residence. And if it's a single-family residence, then you don't put your tallest buildings right next to that. One of the problems we have downtown is that on First Street, where if we were to allow three-stories buildings, under the state law now with density bonus and our inclusionary zoning, it would allow a builder to put a fourth story. So we can say we don't want four-story buildings downtown, but if we allow three-story buildings for residential downtown, we automatically are allowing four-story buildings, and we need to be really careful about that. I'd also like to mention that as soon as you upscale or up-zone a property, you impact the adjacent property value.
Thank you. Teresa?
Well, I'm going to sound like a broken record. I think we need to get creative on this. I think impacting neighbors and putting four- and five-story buildings over their yards is unconscionable. I don't think any of us would want that in our yard, so we need to get much more creative about how we do this housing in our town. I do believe that there are some angles that have not been explored. And if I'm on the council, I promise you that I will explore them, and I will put a committee together, and we will come up with ways to spread some of the burden of the housing requirements around the city in a different way that doesn't change the overall character of our town. As Anita mentioned, we were on the Downtown Building Committee together, and we, I learned quite a bit when I was on that committee. One of the things I learned is, most residents don't want really tall buildings in their town. And as she mentioned, once you go to the three stories, once you add a certain amount of below-market, or certain amount of units, and you do add in the below-market, a developer automatically gets to ask for a number of other things.
Thank you. Nisa?
So I agree with what has been said already. I think for Los Altos and the fact that we have strong residential neighborhoods, which we all love, it's part of our charm and character. It would be the El Camino corridor that I would support having that height building. But I also want to add the fact that even if we move forward with four-stories or higher buildings, we need to ensure that we have strong architectural designs and consider the impact on the neighbors, as we've heard already, as we go up. We have Casito Way as one of the examples I mentioned earlier, and when we work with the developers, we need to emphasize this, because they can actually work with us to ensure that the impact on the neighbors is not as significant as has been in the past. One quick example I have, I was talking to a neighbor that lives behind one of the high-story buildings, and she said, you know, "I support BMRs. I understand why we need high-density housing on El Camino, but there are things a developer can do." And she wants people on city council who have the experience to work with developers to ensure that they consider the impact on us.
Thank you. All right. This next one, we're going to start with you, Nancy. And the question is, what is your position on replacing the main library on San Antonio?
So I support the renovation of the main library. I don't know if it's necessary to replace it. I am in total support. I believe that there is a process undergoing right now to put a bond on the ballot in 2020 to renovate our library, and I support that 100%. I know, for example, there's many areas within the library that are too small, and we've sort of outgrown our space, our limited space. So, yes, full support. I don't know the details under whether it has to be completely rebuilt or can be renovated, but I can tell you that I'm in support of a renovated library or rebuilt as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
We have a great library. And when I was watching the signature collection for Measure C, I listened to people who were doing that collection, asked people whether they voted in Los Altos. And I was amazed at the number of people who come to our library from other cities. So I think we need, before we plan what we're doing with the library, to do a really thorough needs analysis of what we are providing at our library. And not, I'm not suggesting that we have other people not allowed to come, not at all. I'm saying that people love our library. They come from everywhere to come to our library. So let's look at what we can do within the space that we have, within the budget that we need to follow, to really maximize our program offerings, especially for kids, and also seniors are tremendous users of our library. That's all.
Just so I make sure I answered the question, would you repeat it, please?
Sure. What is your position on replacing the main library on San Antonio?
Thank you. So my understanding of the question is, one of the reasons that I think it's being asked is there's discussion about moving it to downtown. So if that is part of the question that somebody had in mind when they submitted the card, I am not a fan of moving it downtown. I just did the Apricot Orchard Walk this weekend. It was fascinating. I am not a huge history buff, but it was fascinating. I would highly recommend when it's going again that you attend that walk. You learn a lot about it. But one of the comments that I heard from somebody that was doing the walk was, "I was sitting in the library the other day, and I was looking out at this orchard, and I was amazed at the view that I had sitting there, and how valuable that view felt." So this was a resident that was saying that. And I support keeping the library and updating it if we need to.
Thank you. Nisa?
Thank you. So to the question about whether or not we need to move the library downtown, I am not aware of that proposal. I know with the downtown vision plan, and when people were talking about downtown and the civic center, and how, when we think big, you know, what do we envision in the civic center versus downtown. But if we're talking about remodeling and updating our current library, I'm 100% supportive of that. When you think about the different meeting places, as Anita mentioned, a lot of our seniors use our library. So do teens and young families. And when I walk in there with my kids, I have a 10-year-old and a six-year-old, it's really difficult to find a seating area to actually sit down and read books with them. And I know for some of the children's programs, sometimes, you know, they're to capacity. And so I think we need a bigger library. I think we need to upgrade the technology and keep up with the times. But again, you know, it should be the right size for our community. I am not against non-Los Altos residents visiting our library, because we visit other libraries in Santa Clara County as well. But I do think we do need to upgrade our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Our library is currently 24,000 square feet. The need assessment has been done, and we need about 40,000 square feet. As Nisa said, I've attended some children program, you know, marionette shows and all that, and it was really sad to see some parents being chased away with their children because we were out of space, and the fire department would not allow us to add one person. So, yeah, we, obviously, there is a project going on. They're going to figure out the ability, the willingness of the residents to pay for it. But I think it's something down the road, the next two or three years, maybe we can start, you know, doing that. I think we need to first get done with the community center, which is going to be the big effort of building that is going to start next summer.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with you, Anita. And the question, which there may be sub-questions coming up after. Oh, by the way, why do you Oh, by the way, why do you either support or oppose Measure C?
Oh, goodie. I support Measure C because we are required by the state of California to vote if we're going to have tax increases or for a bond measure. To me, Measure C allows and requires that you, the citizens, get to vote on whether we are going to privatize our public lands. Forget all the nonsense you are reading. It is grossly wrong. Most of what the opponents are writing is grossly wrong. It's been debunked by Friends of Los Altos. I encourage you to go read what they've written to debunk all the nonsense. But the truth, the main reason that I support it is that I think it provides a great check, a great validation by the community on whether we are willing to give up our very precious public land for private purposes.
Thank you. Teresa?
Well, I'm the other candidate that supports Measure C. There are only two of us. The reason I support it is because I do believe that residents have a right to know what's happening with their lands in town before they are built upon or leased out. So the city council has agreed that they will not sell any lands, but they will not agree to including the leases in that conversation. That concerns me and leads me to believe that there are efforts underfoot somewhere to then lease our lands without us knowing about it. So I support Measure C. I also think if you ask yourself a simple question, just my statement actually is, follow the money. Who benefits from Measure C passing? The residents. They get to keep their land. They get to decide what happens with their land. Who benefits if it doesn't pass? It's the developers. They get to do what they want with it, and they get to maybe have long-term leases, and we will have no say over what happens to our land.
Thank you. Nisa?
So I'll be the first no on C candidate to talk. And the question I ask residents, which really resonates, is do you really want to be making decisions on land use and city leases? And what will those city leases look like when we present them to the voters? Will they have the contract terms? Will they be able to understand what certain provisions mean? As an attorney, when I look at Measure C, it's confusing. It will cost a lot of time and resources, our taxpayer dollars, to really understand what it means. And lastly, it goes too far. I support the local law that city council is moving through the process that says we will not sell city-owned property or land without you, the voters, deciding. But by having leases as part of Measure C, that goes too far. This is the fundamental authority of city council members to make these decisions, and these are leases that will benefit us. It's not for the developers. These are leases with the libraries, the fire stations, and other entities that provide core services to the community.
Thank you. Sean?
I agree 100%. It was Nisa, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Nancy? Yes, I'm also opposed to Measure C. There are two components of Measure C, the sale of land and the lease of land. In terms of the sale of land, the council has proactively addressed this. In the first place, nobody sold any parkland or redesignated it ever in this city. There's been a small amount of commercial land that was sold, but that would not have been protected by Measure C anyway. So the council has taken proactive measures to make sure that in the future, any sale of parks and public land would have to go to a vote. That's great. We all agree. And I think that's a wonderful way to reach out to the yes-on-Measure-C people. I think the leasing is critical to how our city runs, to our nonprofit arrangements with various nonprofits, that we enter into agreements for the benefit of our community. It would very much limit what we can offer to our residents in terms of community amenities. So vote no on C. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And this, we'll start with you, Teresa. And it's a follow-up to that. Do you, how do you think Measure C would affect the implementation of the ideas in the downtown vision?
First and foremost, the seven-and-a-half parking lots that are being proposed to be taken away and turned into office building would be greatly affected by that. So I think that we have to be aware that when we're talking about the downtown visioning plan, there are efforts to take public lands and turn them into, not, I wouldn't say private, but to lease them. So Measure C would stop that ability, that happening, without the voters being able to say whether or not they want that to happen. So I think it's an important thing to consider as we look at the downtown visioning plan. Where would Measure C have a positive effect, and where would it not passing have a negative effect?
Thank you.
Nancy, do you mind repeating the question?
How do you think Measure C will affect the implementation of ideas in the downtown vision?
So if Measure C is implemented, it will directly impact portions of the downtown vision plan. As we mentioned earlier, you know, one of the reasons why over 80% of Los Altos supported the downtown vision plan is because they wanted increased vibrancy downtown. And one of the things we consider when we talk about increased vibrancy are gathering spaces for the community. And so, for example, if Measure C were to pass, we wouldn't be able to have a park on one of our parking plazas. We would have to go to the voters to decide whether or not we could put a park on one of our parking plazas. And there are other proposals in the downtown vision plan that envision using some of the parking plazas. And I want to emphasize that because I support portions of the vision plan, but I do not support using all of the parking plazas downtown. We should keep some of the parking plazas. I know many residents love our parking plazas, but I do think as part of the vision plan and to increase vibrancy, we should and could use some of the parking plazas to increase vibrancy.
Thank you. Sean?
There's several projects in the, potential project in the vision plan that involve plazas, but they're involved, there are only three major ones on public plazas. And each one of those projects, by the way, if we were to consider it over the next 10 or 15 years, would have to come, would have to have public hearings. It will go to the planning commission. We'll get a lot of public input. And then, so, there, nothing is going to happen over time, I mean, immediately. Things happen gradually. If we don't like what's happening, we can stop it at any time. So as I said, I think at the council meeting, the vision is à la carte, you know. You know, Nancy likes some of the things in the vision, you know. Nisa likes others. I like others. And so whoever is on the council is going to weigh in, but we're going to hear from the people. And if they absolutely don't like one of the things, we're not going to do it.
Thank you. Nancy?
So I would say in terms of our downtown vision, after two years, the consultants came back, and they had four different scenarios, everything from the most extreme to doing almost nothing. What they did then is sort of consolidate all those down into much more palatable potential opportunities. I have never, well, I shouldn't say I've never, but the, there's nothing in there that says we're going to use all seven-and-a-half of our plazas. In fact, whatever does happen over time is going to happen very conservatively, very slowly. And there are many ways that we can manage our parking issues that we have right now. We have not taken care of the parking needs that we currently have. So once we fix those, we will have space to have an outdoor dining plaza, build a performing arts theater that has parking underneath. We'll actually end up adding parking to our downtown inventory. So, but with Measure C, it would highly prevent any of these things from happening, because it's too time-consuming, too expensive, be almost impossible to get any of these things through. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next question.
Do I get to answer?
I'm sorry. No, yeah, no, no. Sorry. Sorry. My bad. Go ahead.
That's all right. I'd like to quote Councilmember Prochnow, who said that a long-term lease is effectively a sale, and that not to include leases when you're going to prohibit sales or require a vote for sales was disingenuous. And I think that's a great thing about Measure C, is that it does cover leases as well as sales, so that it's, it really puts things on an even footing. It is not true that you would have to have a vote to convert any of plazas four, five, and six to parks. There's a specific provision in Measure C that says you can convert any public land, city-owned land to parks without a vote. So that's, I'm sorry, but that's just a thing you want to pick up the next time you read it. The next thing is that with respect to the downtown vision specifically, you can't go back. That's what we learned with 400 Main. We did sell that. It wouldn't have been covered by Measure C, but we sold it. The council sold it. It happened very quickly, and not in a transparent way. And so these kinds of things can happen, and that is why we need Measure C, so that people can have a final say.
Thank you. And again, I'm sorry about that.
That's all right.
Nisa, this next one is going to come to you. South Los Altos has been and is neglected by the city. What will you do to rectify this?
So first, I want to dispute that statement. When you state that the city has neglected South Los Altos, I am proud to be a resident here in Los Altos, and that includes North Los Altos, South Los Altos. I'll quickly give an example. I was chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And last year, we decided to do, I was on the subcommittee that was planning a movie in the park, or Halloween movie in the park. And we were discussing, which park should we have our first movie night? And a couple people were throwing out different parks. And I spoke up, and I said, "I want our first movie night to be in Grant Park." And I made sure that once we started the planning process, I reached out to my friends in South Los Altos to let them know that we were going to have a movie there, and we wanted them to show up. And boy, did they show up. And so I think, you know, as a council member, I will engage with the entire Los Altos community. I think one of my goals is to be a champion for all neighborhoods. And I think what we need to do as council members is to really engage and understand their needs and support their needs.
Thank you. Sean?
Well, we are handicapped in Los Altos by our geography. It's a, we are narrow and long. So, and historically, the major assets are in North Los Altos. That's the way it is. So obviously, like, Community Center is here, and the main library is here. However, we are investing also in South Los Altos to the extent we can. We've poured in hundreds of thousands of dollars in Grant. We've redone a lot of things in Grant. We've, the Annex Library is in pretty good shape. In fact, it's pretty attractive. We continue to invest. And I'm in favor of continuing to proportionally do some project in South Los Altos. But I can, I agree with Nisa. I don't think we've neglected, you know, it's just where the assets are right now.
Thank you. Nancy?
So as a resident of Los Altos, I never think of it as North Los Altos and South Los Altos. To me, we're all one Los Altos. But I know for some people that is an issue. I also have a lot of friends that live in South Los Altos, and I do know that they have specific issues that need to be addressed. I think, as Jean said, we need to investigate, invest proportionally in our facilities in the south part of town. I think we need to really focus on traffic and safe routes to school and safe neighborhoods. It's an area that has been neglected to a certain degree, and there's been some correction of that recently, with the city working closer with the Cupertino School District to provide crossing guards and other safety measures for Montclair. And there's still a lot of hotspots for traffic and kids, and we want our kids to ride bikes and walk to school. And we need to solve some of these problems quickly for those residents. And that includes the kids going across to Cupertino Middle School and Homestead High School. So I support our entire community, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
It's not just a matter of the assets and how we happen to have more of them up in the north. It's about the attention we pay to the issues that the community, that the residents have throughout our city. Safe routes to school, which Nancy mentioned, is a big one. I was at a meeting in February, and I was astonished that the parents basically had to do an immense amount of work to try and get safe routes to school for their kids where they're crossing boundaries. And there's an issue in the south about where Cupertino, Mountain View, Los Altos all come together across jurisdictional. I think that the council can take a leadership role in solving those multi-jurisdictional issues so that kids get safe routes to school, even if they are crossing a city boundary. Another one is that we shouldn't be ignoring street maintenance, simple things like are we trimming the bushes, or making people trim their bushes around corners so that the kids can safely go around the corners on their bikes? And then the last thing is that I think we really need to listen to what's going on at Grant Park and help the senior kitchen thing get fixed.
Thank you. Teresa?
Thank you. It's my neighborhood. I live in Loyola Corner, so I've been active in community group in that area for 12 years. One of the things that I say to the neighbors is, watch out what you ask for. They may come over here and just start building it out, and then you'll be sorry you said, "Come over here and start working on the neighborhoods." So I have to say, I never feel neglected over there, but I do know that some people say that. I do think Grant Park Senior Center does need some attention. I took a look at the kitchen and thought, boy, oh, boy, we need to do something with this so that it's better for the seniors. And they can do more diverse and interesting meals for seniors that go to that center. They're pretty boring, given that they have to use hot pots and crock pots and that sort of thing. So as far as making sure that South Los Altos gets its due, I think that it ought to be part of the budget, and we need to look at the infrastructure that needs to be worked on there. Some bridges there that could use a little work. We have some very unattractive signs that are giant, like, street signs that say caution for bridges. I think those need to change. We could do some other things.
Thank you. I have a whole group of little questions here. They're all kind of related. I'm looking at them, thinking, which is the right one to ask first? And I'm going to ask, this is the one I'm picking. So we're going to start with Jean, and the question is, starts with a statement. "Mountain View and Palo Alto have increased developer fees to pay for traffic and schools. What is Los Altos doing in terms of the fees to address overcrowding, traffic up and down San Antonio?" I think also you should include El Camino in that answer. And if not, why not?
I don't know. Fees, fees are, if fees are imposed on developers, you need to develop to pay the fee. So I don't know that we want to encourage too much of that. So essentially, the idea is, we do have already a lot of fees, but I would like to answer to the last question, since I haven't used my time, on the kitchen, because I'm all in favor. In fact, Vice Mayor Lynette Eng and me were big proponents of a kitchen, a commercial kitchen for the seniors at Grant. And we went ahead against some of the other council members, and we were willing to go to the extravagance of spending half a million dollars. And the final bids, the best bid came out at $750,000. So I'm sorry, but even a rich city like us cannot justify spending $750,000 on a kitchen.
Thank you.
Would you mind repeating the question? Thank you.
The question was, "Mountain View and Palo Alto have increased developer fees to pay for traffic and schools. What is Los Altos doing in terms of the fees to address overcrowding, traffic comma, traffic up and down San Antonio?" And I added El Camino real. If not, why not?
So there are several types of fees that we can assess onto developments. There's fees we assess for Park in Lew. There's affordable housing in Lew fees that we could be assessing, and we're talking about. There's public art fees, which we've just, we've just started. There's parking in Lew fees. And I think there's a lot of these things that we do need to begin enacting, and they probably should have been enacted a long time ago. And we would already have money to build some underground parking, or money to build some affordable housing. So I think we do need to look at those. We need to be careful about how much we assess for each one. So, for example, don't hate me for saying this, but we just approved a public art fee of 1%. I think it's wonderful, but I think a half a percent would have been just as well, if we could have used the other half a percent for affordable housing or something else. So I do think we need to be doing more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
I think the question has to do with overcrowding, traffic, and schools, right? Those problems aren't coming because of development in Los Altos. Those problems are coming because of development in our adjoining communities. So I think the real question is not how do we impose fees on our developers, who are doing really not a whole lot, with a couple of exceptions with large, somewhat larger projects on El Camino. But what do we do in working with our surrounding communities to try and manage the traffic impact and the schools' impact of the huge development that's going on in this area? And I don't have a magic answer and a magic bullet for that, but I can tell you that until we ask the question and we try to sit down with our sister cities and talk about it, we won't solve it.
Thank you. Teresa?
I'm not well-versed on a lot of the fees that may be charged at this point. But what I can say about fees, and I've observed in other cities, is you can charge the fees, but you can't pretend that parking is going to
but you can't pretend that parking is going to magically appear just by charging a fee because they aren't meeting the parking requirements. We must meet parking requirements. We must deal with traffic. Making sure that those are issues that are being addressed, as opposed to trying to have somebody pay to get out of them, to me, just makes common sense and is a top priority when you're talking about developing a city.
Thank you. Nisa?
I agree with what Teresa just said. Fees alone is not the solution. This is a regional issue. As someone who's worked at different levels of government, I understand that sometimes it's tricky to work with sister cities, the county, and even the state to get these problems solved. But it's something I would do on council. I would lead that effort. Because when I think of safe routes to school, for example, it was mentioned earlier about the Cupertino Union School District, safe routes to school issue. That touches multiple jurisdictions, including the county and other cities. And in order to move forward on a solution to reduce the traffic impact on our streets and the overcrowding and the impact on our schools, this is a regional issue that we need leaders with the right experience to work with the other leaders to come up with a solution and move it forward. And so when I hear about Palo Alto and Mountain View assessing these fees from developers, that's a good first step, but I actually don't think it solves the problem. It's a bigger regional problem that we need to work well with the other jurisdictions and move forward.
Thank you. We're going to start this next one with you, Nancy. "How will you improve outreach in our community in order to hear all voices versus only the loud voices?"
Okay, so I do think it's a process and a culture change that we need to do at the council level. We need to have more information going out to the community. We're already doing that. Our city manager does send out weekly updates, which are quite comprehensive. How do we get everybody to sign up for those and actually read them? You know, it's hard. You can't force-feed information down people. But when it comes to specific areas, neighborhood projects, we need to reach out to more than just the people within 500 feet of that area. We need to reach out to the larger neighborhood. We should be able, be having neighborhood meetings and have either the entire council at those meetings, or at least two of the council members, so that we can understand what the issues are so we can mitigate problems before they suddenly arise when decisions are about to be made. So we can definitely do much more with outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
I want to talk both at a mega level and at a smaller level. Start with the smaller level. At the last Planning Commission meeting, we had a neighborhood that came forward. There are 48 homes. They've never had zoning codes written for them to guide them in terms of what kind of remodeling, expansion, changes they can do. And one of the things I suggested was that rather than our usual process, which is, okay, let the staff go away and figure out a draft solution, is why don't we sit down with those neighbors, do a little educating about what's in a zoning code normally? Let's look at the kinds of issues that they have, which there are some. They have houses built across property lines, for example. They have prescriptive easements and those kinds of problems. Let's do a little education, and let's work collaboratively to figure out what kinds of things would help this neighborhood do the kinds of things that will maintain the neighborhood, allow people to remodel and so on, and do it all in a sensible way. So that's at a micro level. We can do that at a micro level on a one-by-one case. There are a lot of tools out there now electronically. Stanford is doing some to allow more collaborative things at a broad level.
Thank you. Teresa?
I'm happy to hear what both of the other candidates have said about this. I've been asking for years for us to get cards out to more than the 500-foot radius for projects. I won't tell you how I was treated when I asked for it many times, but I keep asking. I think we have to reach out much further than the 500 feet. I see other cities doing things with sandwich boards. I think we could do that as well, perhaps banners. I agree with Anita that we need to be asking our residents first, what do they want? And then working with staff to get that to happen. Have staff help educate about what can happen and what can be done, you know, with zoning. And that's the way that we can move forward on this discussion of getting more people involved and not just the loud people.
Thank you. Nisa?
So to use Teresa's word, creative. I do think we need to consider different creative solutions to really engage with our community. But one thing I would do as a council member is to be more proactive. Not wait until the loud voices come to council meeting, but actually go to the community, go to their potlucks, go to their neighborhood meetings, not only when it's an election year. And really listen to them and respect their opinions and their voices, and ensure I bring that back to council. I ran for city council two years ago and lost by six votes, and I met some wonderful people in Los Altos when I ran. And I didn't just go away. I stayed in touch, and when they had issues, I came to city council and I supported them. Because I believe that as a community, we need to support each other, even if the issue doesn't directly impact you. And so we can definitely do a better job as council members, being proactive, engaged with our neighbors, and also using creative tools so we get their input and not wait until it's too late, until we make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean?
I think every election, there is this desire by new candidates to come in and say, we want to do more outreach, we want to get more of the voice of the people. And in every, you know, I remember when Jan and Jeannie got elected, I mean, they came in to revolutionize the whole idea of outreach and input from the community. And we've made us some progress, but it's a constant, constant battle. Some of the difficulty is people don't pay attention until it's a problem that they care about, you know? So sometimes, you know, you have lots of meetings, they, you know, they don't come, and then at the end, they say, wait a minute, you never told me. So I think it's a constant battle. We, I think, I like the idea of going to neighborhoods and maybe have a meeting, say, at Loyola Corners, one at Grant, et cetera, to talk about what are the issues that you guys in this neighborhood have and, you know, and maybe it'd be more focused.
Thank you. This, I think, will be our last question before we do closing statements, and we're going to start with you, Anita. "What is the number one thing Los Altos can do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions?" Gary.
It's Gary.
It's Gary. I didn't write it.
I own horses, but they're not here. I said, I own horses, but they're not here. So I can't promise to get rid of my horses. It's not a simple, single thing. It's a multitude of things. It's like conserving water. There's not a single thing you can do. Can we help with maybe the fleet of cars for the city? Yeah. Can we perhaps do something about idling people, picking up kids from school? Yes, we can. Do we want to get into things like greater political issues of discounts and encouraging of electric vehicles? I think the state kind of has that covered, and we ought to stay out of it, frankly, and leave that to the state and federal government. So I think it's a matter of doing a number of small things, or what seem to be smaller things, because it's not a single problem.
Thank you. Teresa?
I love the new signs in the parking lot that say, turn your key off so you're not idling, and I just saw them tonight and thought they were fabulous. I think we can, again, become creative about how we can get people out of their cars. I run on the stance that I am a creative person. I look outside of what the normal way of doing things are, especially, I did not grow up in the suburbs. I grew up in a city, and I think cities have a different way of looking at things than a lot of suburban areas do. Getting out of cars, getting on bikes, walking more, those are things that I think we could have fun with. We could have some rewards for doing those things. The other is solar. We're really missing out on putting some solar panels in our town. We're doing the Hillview Community Center. There isn't a solar panel on it. To me, that's just unbelievable. We need to be the leaders as council and as a city. We need to be showing people how to do that. And by being the leaders and showing how to do it, I believe residents will follow. Right now, a lot of our residents are leading us.
Thank you.
I'm glad you mentioned, sorry Nancy. Nisa? I'm glad you mentioned the solar panels. When I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we did our memo recommending what we wanted to see at the new community center, that's one of the things we recommended. I've been endorsed by the League of Conservation Voters and Sierra Club because they know I'm strong on environmental issues. So this is an issue near and dear to my heart. A couple of things we can do, we already have a climate action plan. We should look at the different portions of the climate action plan that we can immediately implement. We also should consider incentivizing our business community and residents to come up with solutions that will reduce the pollution and the greenhouse gases. You know, one other idea I have with Anita mentioning the fleet of cars, one of the things when I was at the county, I represented the planning department and facilities and fleet. And as a council member, I would also look into when we're purchasing cars to make sure that they're environmentally friendly cars, because that's investing our direct dollars in ways we can definitely help the environment.
Thank you. Jean?
The single biggest thing we are doing towards our environmental objectives, achieving our mental objectives, is the Silicon Valley Clean Energy. We are now, have converted to, when you get your electricity at home, you're getting it delivered by PG&E, but in fact, produced via the Silicon Valley Clean Energy, which is a consortium of several cities, of which Los Altos is part. And they have a much bigger percentage of renewable energy in it. So you don't know about it, you infect it the same price or cheaper, but in fact, you are now becoming, all the residents here are becoming a lot more environmentally friendly. There are lots of things, I mean, the big other thing is traffic and all that, and using more bicycle, and to the extent that we can improve the safe route to schools and the traffic and all that, we help that.
Thank you. Nancy?
So I don't think I can add a lot, because all of the suggestions I've heard have been wonderful. I'd like to mention another environmental concern, which is basically stormwater runoff and water pollution to our bay. There's a current issue right now with the city council where we're looking at adopting some new regulations for the swales in front of each driveway. And I'd like to see 100% permeable swales. They're called bio-swales. And they allow the water to drain into the property owner, down into the land, versus going off the asphalt and the concrete and bringing stormwater runoff into our bay. That's something that we can fix right away and would be a major improvement for our environmental causes. So, thank you.
Thanks. All right, so now you are each going to be giving a two-minute closing, and we're going to continue with our rotation. So Teresa, we're going to start the closings with you, and then move around to Nisa.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. Hopefully, you've gained some insight into my thinking and my beliefs about what works for the residents in this town and how we can benefit the residents in this town. I consider myself creative, thoughtful, transparent, and respectful. I would ask that you visit my website, read my letter to the residents, and that you would look at the downtown visioning plan and have a greater understanding of what is underfoot with the downtown visioning plan. I would also ask that you consider, what do you want for your city? This is the year that our general plan will be updated. What kind of heights do you want on the buildings? Look at who is supporting the candidates and ask yourself, are these people being supported by major growth backers, or are they being supported by residents and by the small businesses in town, as I am? I am not opposed to growth and development, but I am opposed to mega heights and density that impacts our residents in any negative way. I do believe, as I've stated, that we must discuss with our residents what happens in the future in this town. I think it's very important that even though some of the voices are louder than others, that we listen to them, and because many of the louder voices do actually represent smaller groups. I myself have spoken for our group. There's anywhere from 150 to 250 people in our neighborhood that have chosen not to always come to the meetings and speak up. Some, a few of us will do that for them. So I would say sometimes they're louder, and they're louder, but they're representing other people. But I would really personally like to see that people don't have to show up at the meetings, because I think if we're talking to them first, we'll solve that problem and that that's an important piece to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nisa?
Thank you. First, let me thank everybody for sitting through almost 90 minutes of our debate forum discussing issues that will impact all our lives. I'm running for Los Altos City Council. As I mentioned, I'm raising my family here. I have a 10-year-old and a six-year-old. And I care deeply about the future of our community, not just for my family, but for your families. I've been endorsed by eight former Los Altos mayors, and also Supervisor Semidion, State Senator Jerry Hill, State Assembly Member Mark Berman, and many others. And when I talk with them, because they've all served on different governing bodies, including Los Altos City Council, they all emphasize the importance of having the right experience, the right leadership style, the right temperament. When they look at my background in history and what I've done with public service at different levels of government, they endorse me because they think I'd be a good fit for Los Altos City Council. And so you've heard us tonight discuss different issues. These are complicated issues. And so we want to make sure we have council members who are able to understand, analyze, and make decisions on these issues. We also need to make sure that we have council members who have demonstrated, they have not just been throwing out the buzzwords, but they've demonstrated that they have the right leadership style to work well with others, build consensus, and move issues forward. City council is a legislative body, and in order for us to accomplish anything for the community, we will need to work together with other council members and also the community. I mentioned also that I'm the mom of a young family, and I see a couple of them here. So I do want to add, in addition to being an attorney and adding value in that capacity, having that voice and perspective added to council would also be valuable. I will not just represent young families. I'll represent seniors, I'll represent young families, empty nesters, my friends and residents in North Los Altos and South Los Altos. I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. Jean?
Thank you. You have several excellent candidates, especially the two on my left and right, with whom I agree on 90% of the issues. The difference is experience. I have been in city government for 14 years, as I said, two on the Planning Commission and 12 years on council, and that experience has the advantage, you know, give me an advantage that I understand how things get done in a government entity. You know, it's, you come in with great ideas, and then you find out, well, how things work and how to make decision, and sometimes you get frustrated. I'm not either pro-development or anti-development, but I'm for the right development in the right place. The proof of it is I've been endorsed by the business groups like the Chamber of Commerce and the Realtors, as well as by the environmental group like the Sierra Club and the League of Conservation Voters. And the reason is, I'm pragmatic and not ideological. I don't come in with an agenda to go one way or the other. I'm pragmatic. I look at the issues we have in Los Altos and try to move them forward to find solution. So that's the difference. So I'm asking you for your vote on November 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
So I'd like to start by saying my top priority, or basically my vision for Los Altos. It's basically to preserve our charm, our character, and our quality of life while also enhancing our downtown and neighborhood business district vibrancy. I'd also like to mention that I have over 150 elected officials, community leaders, and commissioners who've endorsed me, including all five of the MVLA High School trustees. I'd like to leave you with a quick reminder and a partial list of the projects that I have actively worked on and accomplished, and many of which are yet to come. These have included the acquisition of Lincoln Park, three new crosswalks for safe routes to school, traffic calming, youth and teens, downtown and neighborhood business district vibrancy, a downtown performing arts center, and enhanced community amenities, including a nature center for the benefit of the community. I work on these projects not because they are good for me, but because they are good for our community as a whole. I have no special interests. I believe my experience and leadership in these areas and others will serve me well on council. I will analyze the data and information thoroughly, represent our best interests based on constant community outreach, and collaborate with the other four council members. I will work on improving and streamlining our city governance and the way our council interacts with our residents, staff, and commissions. I encourage all of you to participate with me as we work towards making Los Altos the best it can be, and I ask you for your vote so that we can move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, Anita?
Thank you. We need city council members who- We need city council members who will put residents' interests and relevant facts ahead of personal interests and pet causes. We know that there will be growth, and it's important how we manage that growth, not just within our town, but the growth that's happening around us. We need to use analytical tools and make decisions after we have resident input and the facts, and not before. I've seen too much of the other in the last four years. We need to consider the long-term impacts of our decisions. For example, when we upzone a piece of property to allow housing, what we're basically saying to the adjoining parcels is, this is where you're headed, and the business that's there is on its way out. We don't tend to have those conversations when we make those kinds of zoning decisions, and we need to. We need to return to fiscal responsibility so we can maintain our infrastructure, be good stewards of our parks and public lands, and assure safety on our roads for everyone. We need good leadership and exceptional governance because that is what our residents deserve. We have the smartest people in the world who live in this town, and we need to make better use of all the knowledge that you have when we are making decisions, whether you're serving on commissions, ad hoc committees, or contributing information in an expanded outreach to get residents' input before we make decisions. We need to not throw up our hands when we run into a roadblock. That's what happened with the Grand Park Kitchen. We don't just say, eh, the bid came in above what we thought the RFP would be. How about we go back and look at the RFP? How about we go back and look at the situation? Let's find a solution and not just give up. That's not what California's about. That's not what Silicon Valley's about. We don't give up. Finally, we need to maintain the city because we have the best city in the whole valley with your help. I'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
That concludes our forum. I would like to thank the candidates for participating. I'd also like to thank all the volunteers who've made the forum possible. This forum was designed to impart information to you, the voter, in accordance with our belief that a democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We hope that the insights you've gained in this forum will aid you in making your decision. For more voter information, please visit the Voters Edge website. Please vote and help make our democracy work. Thank you.
And you proved how smart you are with those great questions.
Yeah. Candidates?